Session. And you want to do that by itself and then do the motions?
Yeah, so all in favor say aye. Aye. Okay.
And then I'd make a motion that out of the executive session, we go ahead and approve the request for leave without pay. And that we go ahead and move forward on making this settlement with Idaho Power.
Just one question. Do you want us to read these amounts from these taxing districts?
You can just read if you want, or we could just approve that through invoice. Those are just the portions that the county has to pay. I figured since we were doing it this way, I would have you guys authorize those expenditures. The rest of them statute gives me the authority to do so.
How would you like us to do that Nancy?
I think invoice that does great, so.
Okay. All right, so the motion is as good as it stands then? Okay. All right. We have a motion. No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's gonna be super nice.
Yeah, and it's all turds. Yeah, so we're gonna have soccer leagues and stuff like that.
Yeah. Are you some inside of that new tiny building for people? It's, yeah, it's not as like, it's not as modern as you would expect.
Hi, go ahead and state your name for the record.
I'm Dean Bradley.
Uh, Tom Bradley.
Okay. And evidently you bought some property that had a pre-existing container on it, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Shipping container. So our count, well, the county is starting to do the analysis for permits and such. And we got a letter that we had two structures on our property that didn't have a permit. And we, coming from different states, we live in a rural area, we put up a small carport, didn't realize a permit was needed, so we're rectifying that. However, the other structure that they mentioned was this Connex or storage container. And so I was speaking with them about the fact that that container's been on the property for three and a half, four years. We've been there for a year and a half. So that container's been there prior to us purchasing the property. So as we explained to them, we don't mind doing the paperwork. I mean, we're already doing it for the storage container. We don't mind doing the paperwork so that it's permitted. But it's the fee that would be acquired to pay for something that's already been on this property for quite some time. So we're just asking to have the fee waived, but we're more than happy to make sure that it's permitted so that going forward, or if the property's ever sold, the next person doesn't have to go through that.
Okay. Hal?
Real quickly, a call came in, it's code violation relative to structure being built. We went out, determined the carport issue as well as the Connex. Code officer came back, did research, basically what you were presented was what they just told you.
Do you have a recommendation?
In light of the fact that Idaho's a buyer beware state, and we now have a code officer who finds all kinds of things across the county, our recommendation is to basically grant them an exception since they purchased it after the fact with the assumption that it had been permitted. They're willing to go through the permitting process, they're just asking to have the fee waived on the Connex. I am assuming that the property at one time was taxed as ag. Probably the previous owner may have been taxed as ag, however, when a new person purchases the property, they have to reapply for the ag exemption. That said, historically, the Connex box was on the property and they had asked or come to us for permitting, we probably would have gone down the path of an ag exemption structure, which is a very minimal fee.
And we did wind up having...
Two hundred and eighty, three hundred dollars.
I'm sorry about that, yeah. When we were at the title company, they did file for the exemption, for the tax exemption or whatever it's called. So it did go through that process and we purchased it in 2023.
So what fee are we asking to waive?
The fee for the Connex.
So the permit fee for the Connex or the?
The permit fee for the Connex.
Okay, and how much is that?
I would imagine it's somewhere, I don't know exactly, two hundred and eighty, three hundred, I can't remember.
I know with, I didn't ask Janay, but I know with the carport, it's gonna be four hundred and thirty dollars. So she said that the Connex container would probably run real close to the same because it's actually larger than the carport. So she felt that the fee would probably be real close to the same as the carport.
My only question would be, the way this is currently positioned and set in here, would it meet our billing code?
Yes, everything meets, everything meets zoning ordinance as well as regulations.
If it meets within the regulations, I have no problem given, because it was there when they purchased the property.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We appreciate that.
One question.
Yes, sir.
When we do the permit, is there something that we have to give to them on the wave of the permit?
The fee.
Okay.
It's already taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
I can't waive the fee, but now that I have a formal action, I can waive the fee in the system.
Okay.
When we process it.
Okay.
Okay, so when I submit it, do I just need to let Janay know that?
I'll let Janay know.
Perfect. We appreciate it.
And Nancy will publish the findings and send us an email and we'll have record of it, so we're good.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it, y'all have a good day.
You too.
Stuart?
Okay, you need name and address?
Yes, please.
Stuart Ward with Dioptra, forty-eight eighty Culverdale in Chubbuck. I understand you guys have questions regarding the, our proposal for those, to survey those properties and income.
I don't have a question, I have a solution.
Go for it.
I don't wanna survey it, I just wanna give it to the city of income.
Okay.
And just, I've talked to the mayor, we'll just give him, with the one parcel number, I've been over and talked to the assessor's office, we'll just give it to him. Two of the parcels are streets anyway. The city in past have leased their alleyways and stuff to people. They can do that with the caboose. It's their property, they can do with it what they want.
Okay.
So you're off the hook.
That works for me.
Okay.
Okay, makes it easy on my part. I found issues with some of the other surveys out there, so it makes it way easier, but yeah.
After looking at it and the cost and stuff, I just didn't see any reason to do it. We're not gonna gain anything out of it. Give it to the city of income, they're already occupying most of the property anyway.
And I guess from my standpoint, you're welcome to hand them my proposal. If they decide they want it surveyed for their benefit, then I'd honor that same price for them. But I doubt they would. If you guys aren't willing to, they're not going to.
Well, we offered it to them before for just doing a survey and it was about two thousand dollars less then and they didn't wanna do it then.
Gotcha. Yeah, so, but you're welcome to share that with them if you want to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott? Thanks Hal.
Good morning. Scott Crowther, Event Director, Business Manager. We got a couple contracts to talk about today. The first one is, we'll go with BCRA. So for several years, we've, we've worked with BCRA and they are a nonprofit barrel racing association. And we are asking, or requesting a fifty percent fee reduction that's standard with all of our other, the previous contracts that we've done with these guys. And this is Cody Head with BCRA, sorry.
All right. How many years you been doing this with us, Cody?
I've, I've been with that association for thirty years. But I saw you personally last year.
Yeah.
For the first time, yeah.
Okay.
I drew the short straw for the first time last year.
Well, hopefully we didn't treat you too bad. Came back, so it must not have been too bad.
Privilege to be here.
Wow, all right. Any questions, concerns?
No.
Okay.
Everything's been good in the past, so.
Yeah, very good, appreciate it.
Then I would move that we approve the fee reduction as presented. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, the next one we will do will be Taylor. So about a month ago, I was asked to go and speak at an event about our venue. And Taylor was the one that organized that event. And while we were there, we started talking about the Idaho State Journal's Family Fun Day. And I thought it would be a fantastic event to hold at our complex, specifically in the pre-party area. So Taylor, do you wanna introduce yourself and then maybe tell us a little about the event?
Yeah, Taylor Smith, Idaho State Journal. So our Family Fun Day, we've been doing for about fifteen, sixteen years now. It's a free event for the public. We promote it in our paper, online and in Facebook. We have booths set up there that can give away swag, we have bounce houses for kids to do. We used to actually have it up there for a couple years at the county as well. After the complex was built, we bring paddle boards out for the kids. And then we've actually tied in in the past with the Free Fishing Day, which we'd like to do again. It would be on that same day with fishing game. And I've already chatted with them as well and they would be okay with us having the event at the same time. But that's basically the gist of it, is just kind of just a free family day of, like you said, we have vendors from twenty to thirty vendors that come out business-wise and give away free stuff and then just make it a good, good family day.
This also helps us to accomplish, you know, what we have of trying to get people to use that part of the complex as just an average or regular. Because that is all for all of our concerts and we also wanna get more activities in the venue as much as we can, so.
My only question is the insurance. There's nothing there in that block.
So, so we would carry the insurance on that. I don't know, with the city, it was different. We used to do Pocatello with you guys, I mean, whatever it takes, we can, we can accommodate the insurance.
And I have no problem.
It's a million dollar policy.
Waving a fee, but I'd like that insurance coverage just to be there, just to cover the county.
And that's just, this is one of those weird things that we just need to fix on our contract because our standard insurance is just gonna be a million dollars.
Yeah, all right, so I'm gonna write in a million dollars insurance on this and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yeah. Pretty typical.
Yep. And waived fee.
Okay.
So I'll make that in the motion.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Just one.
Oh, no. No. I'm outta control this morning.
All right, Michaela.
Morning.
Good morning.
Michaela Prohuska, Port Knutfell Trust.
So Michaela coordinates this, this wonderful yoga at the port event for us. It has, it has been gangbusters the last two years we've done it. It's crazy how many people come up there and how many people like it. And if we could work it out somehow with our schedule, I would love to do it more frequently just, it's, it's tough with all the holes we have on days for concerts to finally come up with a set of day, but it's a fantastic event. And so again, we're asking to do that again this year and waive the fees for this service.
Given, given the request for potentially more dates, could we put some soft dates out there and as soon as you know yes or no, we can let her know and do that? Cause I think it's a great event as well. And I'd like to see Scott up there in some yoga pants.
Heck, yeah.
I think HR is right here, we're good. We have actually had some discussions about, about trying to expand it and really it comes down to kinda who would lead that expansion. One of the suggestions we've had would be like a local yoga vendor may be the person to lead that expansion. And as it sits right now, our partnership with Health Trust is, is easy to use. It would be a little bit different, in my opinion, if we went to a vendor.
Okay.
But we have had some discussions about it.
Yeah, that's something that we could also operate as well since we do, or we have done this every year, we do have connections with some of the yoga studios, so then that's something that I can present to them. If that's something that their team has time for, the manpower for and the desire to do it, like once a month, I know people have mentioned, I know people mention every weekend, but I know that that's also not impossible, but.
Don't even think about August. Right? Just jam pack. But anyway.
Well, I think it's a great event, I loved seeing it.
Thanks.
No, no problem.
All right, then I would move that we approve the contract as requested. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll give Scott some yoga pants. Buddy?
Good morning, Christian.
Morning.
Public Works Assistant Director. I just wanted to go over our updated sales agreement that we have through Kenworth on that ten wheeler we've been fighting over for the last seventeen months. I don't know if you want the whole backstory of it or where you'd like to be, but I settled kinda with Kenworth. We come up with a number of knocking thirteen thousand dollars off the bill, which would cover getting those welds replaced by our shop as well as painting the truck bit. We feel that that's adequate amount of money to be able to get that work done. It is gonna take some time from our employees to get that done, but that's kinda where we're at with those numbers.
So has Kenworth been good to work with?
Kenworth's been great to work with.
The bed company has been the problem, so?
Yes.
Kenworth's gonna back what's going on?
Yeah, so after talking with Logan, he's the sales guy that I've been working with, he's the one that came to the agreements with Viking Cives down there to knock that amount, or that amount off. Yeah, I kinda, it came to a halt and I just sent him several pictures of the issues that we had. Just explained to him that I was done doing business with Viking, they had their chance to make it work. Now that we had Kenworth fix it, our shop fix it, CAT fix it, we'll go whatever route Kenworth would like to go, but we're done down there. And so that's something Jason and I will be working on in the future when we try to order our next ten wheeler, say like next year, whenever we can approve for our next one. Trying to either build it in-house or have someone locally equip it rather than dealing with kind of the Viking idea, so.
So last week, if you remember, I had given you the adjusted amount that we were gonna pay. We have not released that check yet.
Okay.
So what we thought we would do is we'll void that check. If the commission agrees to this, then I'll give you a new invoice that is back to the original amount less the thirteen thousand. And then we'll issue that payment. Now you did have to buy some paint.
Yeah, so there roughly six thousand dollars is the, the rough quote I got through CAT. I don't anticipate it being that much, but you will see another invoice from this truck for the painting work that'll be getting done.
So this is an ARBA invoice. So what would happen is we have thirteen thousand left on the table. After they get that invoice for the paint, we'll pay that out of ARBA. And then whatever dollars there are left, we'll just find a place to redistribute when I do my ARBA update sometime next month.
Okay. No, we need to get a truck.
That's where I'm at.
We appreciate all the work.
Yeah.
Honestly, and looking out and identifying the poor workmanship and saying no. I mean, thank you. It's a whole lot better than bringing it in and having it, being broke down on that truck.
Yeah, and Jason's been great. He, he has a welding history and, and I do as well, but we, we went down to Salt Lake a couple times to look at it and with looking at, or within, you know, two minutes of looking at it, we're like, yeah, we're not taking this truck, so.
So it's pretty hazardous.
Confirm, we need to pay two eighty-seven, three forty-nine, fifty, right?
Yes. So I think that, okay, we're just gonna check.
Yeah, so I'll void the original check that's sitting downstairs for the.
Okay.
And then we should be able to have pending commission's approval. We would have a new check next Thursday.
Next Thursday, okay.
Yeah, two eighty-seven, three forty-nine, fifty, that's what I got here.
Perfect.
I have that.
So you can throw that with claims too, I just.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to approve, or I will make the motion to approve, sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There you go. Thanks, buddy. Thanks, Jason. Matthew?
Thank you, Matthew Phillips, HR Director. Proposal I have before you is for approval to start implementing a new program offered by our work comp insurance carrier, state insurance fund. There's always a lot of chasing down and coordinating when we have work comp claims I listed here, you know, sometimes it can be complex for employees. We've had a little bit of a problem with some employees going to non-network providers, which can end up costing us more in work comp claims. And then there's always the challenge of, a lot of times the supervisors don't know whether to send them or to not send them because they're not medical personnel. So what this service does is after implementation, employees would be able to have a phone number that they could call twenty-four seven and it connects them to a occupational nurse, so it's a triage line. So instead of having to, they would still report injuries to their supervisor, the supervisor would call it in and do basically his report. And then the employee would get on the phone with the nurse who would go through, hey, what's your injury, what's it looking like, what are you feeling? To know whether to recommend first aid for them or to recommend that they go to our work comp clinic. And the advantages of that is it would help in just make sure that we're sending the injuries to the right place. A lot of times we underutilize first aid. Sometimes employees try to tough it out and not use first aid, or not go to a clinic when they should. So this would ensure that they could, they could go to the right place. I, I also talked to some of the other elected officials, particularly Sheriff's Office, since they're, you know, they're going twenty-four seven. And sometimes their challenges is on nights or weekends, they don't have a lot of their supervisors around to kinda know what to do for work comp stuff. So this would give them a free resource where just basically all of our injury reporting would move to just calling in basically your injury. And then along with that, I appreciate the commission gave us some budget for safety this year. We'd need to make more first aid, more first aid supplies available at different locations, but I think that would be minimal cost. And there's no agreement with this, so I didn't send it to legal. It's just really a service offered by state insurance fund. There's no cost added to, to doing this service. I've implemented things like this and with, when I was working for previous employers and, you know, in general, they might cost four or five thousand dollars a month. So the fact that state fund is offering it to its participants now for free is actually really good value and it can, it can be part of trying to help bring work comp claim costs down. So while providing more support on nights, weekends and to our, you know, remote workers, you know, we've, we've got patrolmen all over the county. So if they get hurt, in theory, they could call this number and have support from a nurse right away if they get injured. So I, I think it's a good program to start to implement, get no cost or really entanglements, so just asking for your approval to start working, implementing it and then we'll train employees and managers on it once we get it set up.
In fact, the commission's gonna have our supervisors meeting next month.
Okay.
And I'd love to have this available so that we can.
Talk about it.
Talk about it, have you come and implement it right then, get it started.
Okay. I will move as fast as they can, they can do it. This is a new program for them, so I don't know how fast they'll implement, but I've implemented.
They don't know it's coming by next month and that's fine.
Okay.
You know, if we could just share this flyer with.
Yeah, yeah, no, we can absolutely do that.
All those done supervisors, this is, this is the pattern that you follow.
Yeah.
Here it is.
And I think it, I think supervisors like it as well because it may, I don't, I haven't seen the reports yet, but it may help eliminate a couple of the paperwork forms they have to do. So it might eliminate the supervisor statement and the employee statement. So, and it'll help us on the HR side because then these nurses fill out our first report of injury and send it to the state industrial commission for us. So that's one last piece of paper we have to do as well.
Okay.
So.
We'll go forth and keep doing great things?
Okay, thanks, we'll get to work on it.
Lacey?
Did we make that in the motion? Do you want to add a motion?
We don't need that motion, do we?
You want that in the motion? I'll go ahead and make a motion that we move forward with this.
Implementation.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye. Aye. There we go, we've rubber stamped it now.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you this morning?
Wonderful.
Great, me too. I am here today to discuss.
Who are you?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I apologize for that. You called me by my first name, so I just assumed everybody would know.
Everybody except the YouTube audience.
Yes, we do have that out here as well. Lacey Parker, I'm the Deputy Trial Court Administrator here in the sixth district. Jason Die, the Trial Court Administrator is in Boise, so he asked for me to sit in and discuss this with you today, so. Just a little, little context, I guess, and some foundation. I'm here in regards to the AverHealth Treatment Court contract for the Lander Building. They have been scheduled to be removed from the Lander Building or be out of the Lander Building as of March first. And they came to our office on the nineteenth of February and, and had asked Jason for an extension until April first. Jason did, from my understanding, just do some brief discussions with Commissioner Moser about the option of extending that in which Commissioner Moser had asked Jason to explore some compensation to the county for that additional month. Jason did go back and talk to AverHealth about that and on the twenty-fourth of February, they reached out to him and said that they were not able to provide that compensation, that they felt that the construction costs of their new location was a little more than they had anticipated, so they didn't have that compensation option available. And so that is why I'm here today is to discuss with you and ask for your consideration on granting that continuation till April first.
Well, I met with the judges yesterday and Jason and they kinda prepped for this discussion and.
Yeah, correct.
I pretty much told them which direction I was gonna go, so I'll let Commissioner Moser go because I'm pretty sure his direction will be the same as mine. What's your thoughts, Commissioner?
Well, I told Jason that I'd give him a month till the first of April.
Wow.
And, and the reason being is because of the complications that have to happen. If they, they can't do the true drug testing if they're not in this facility for this month, they have to do swabs and different things that, that doesn't keep the flow going. So my, he told me, I was, I was told three times that day I was in a good mood, put it that way. But, but I think that, and then I read the commissioner's report today and we just spent sixty-five dollars for fire extinguisher, or testing in that building. So we've already spent the money.
Well.
You go in a different direction?
Yeah, the answer is no. And AverHealth can deal with the repercussions from that. And I talked to the judges about it and the judges went, okay, we can make it work. So that's where I'm at is.
If they can make it work, then, then fine.
Let's get it sold.
When I talked to them, they had a tough time making it work, so.
Well, evidently they found a way to make it work.
Yeah, and ultimately our goal of our office is just to help prevent interrupted, you know, testing for the participants. There, there were some options with the oral swabs. There are some different kind of complexities that come with that in regards to like the testing window is smaller for a lot of those, those tests that we conduct. Marijuana from urine analysis is twenty-one days with an oral swab, it's only two days of detection. So there are some of those complexities, but ultimately that's up to you guys to make that decision and, you know, we'll do our best to support the courts how we, how we need to.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's a dead issue.
I would move that we do not grant the request and have them vacate as previously discussed. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for your time this morning.
Thank you. All right, now the fun stuff. We have the commissioner's report. We have the commissioner's report. Any questions on the commissioner's report and the final payroll report?
No.
Invoices? Yeah, sorry. Out of order here. All right, so on the consent agenda, we have invoices, commissioner's reports, credit applications. Any issues with any of that stuff?
No.
Okay, I move that we approve that. All in favor, say aye. We have the alcohol license application and we have salary rate approval forms. Any discussion on those items?
On the one salary approval form, what date do you want to put effective?
For Allen or?
No, for Maritza, for the interim. On the form, it's asking for Monday, but.
This coming Monday.
No.
Last Monday.
Monday's passed, the Monday that was passed, the 24th. In theory, it should be next Monday.
So, so the proposed start date on the salary rate approval form is 2/24.
Right.
And you're saying that we move it to?
3/3.
3/3. For our discussion, I think that's probably okay.
Yeah.
So if you could just write that on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that's what I had communicated to Emma when I talked to her on Friday.
Okay. All right, so we'll accept that change. And then we have the invoice for McKenworth that we talked about with Buddy while he was here, so that's in there. Okay, I have a motion to approve those. Any further discussion? What am I missing there?
Just, just we need to sign all the invoices.
Okay.
It's all right. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We were just discobobbling. All right, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Probably didn't help I threw you two on the side. But I didn't want to take an assumption and have them in the packet without discussion. All those invoices. On the one per, salary approval form for Maritza, Chairman's 95.
Chairman's 95, okay.